We'll call this meeting to order to Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for January 2nd, 2019. Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Tralka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day, as we do, remembering our prayers, the family of Bill Dodd, longtime schoolteacher and principal at schools here in the area, so he'll be missed. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda received is...
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next, the resolution to elect the Chair of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for 2019.
Make a motion to elect Tom Little as Chair.
Second.
Any further discussion? This is the resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Before we start there, I want to congratulate and thank Mr. White, on behalf of the Board and all the county, for being our Chair this past year. As usual, doing a good job, professional and so forth. So again, we all thank you for that and appreciate it. So, anybody else want to say anything?
No.
Thank you, really.
Let's give him a... Craig, did you want to say anything?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item B, the resolution to elect the Chair Pro Tem, Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for the year of 2019.
I move to elect Linda Layland as Chair Pro Tem.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item C, a motion at the standing committees for 2019 being established.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item D is a motion to authorize the county auditor office to issue cigarette permits on behalf of Blackhawk County for the year of 2019.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item M is a resolution to county auditor be authorized to issue checks payable during 2019 for the following area: water, lights, insurance, telephone, salaries, payrolls, as fixed by the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments on this one? Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item F, this is a resolution, the following newspapers be designated as the three official newspapers of Blackhawk County for 2019: The Courier, The Port City, Progress Review, and The Hudson Herald.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item G, this is a motion of the following appointed as Blackhawk County Department Heads for the year of 2019, Kathryn Nicholas, Engineer, can Veder Information Technology.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carried. Item H is a motion to direct Kathleen Nicholas, County Engineer, to close county roads as necessary during the 2019 construction season, subject to prior notification to the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item J is a motion to direct the Chair to sign the progress vouchers for farm-to-market payments for 2019.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
I'm sorry, I might not be keeping up with you.
You skipped one.
Did you do the embargo motion?
Okay, we'll move back to that one. Item I is a motion to direct Kathleen Nicholas, County Engineer, to embargo county roads.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any questions on this one? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. That should take us down. Did you get J then?
Who moved and seconded that?
I did, I moved it.
I think two of us seconded, so...
Make up your mind.
Dan, that's fine, Dan said it.
Okay. Thank you.
You have another motion on that, or...
No, no, you voted on it, so we're good.
Okay, item K, this is a resolution to adopt the construction evaluation pursuit diable code 459.304, free, on the proposed confinement feet operations.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item three is public comments. Anybody who'd like to speak to the Board at this time? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Veder, we'll move on to item four, this is years of service to employees with 20 or more years of service. Grant.
Okay, thank you. We have a number of people who are getting, all of them are 25 years of service, so it's pretty unprecedented to have them all at that level and so many of them. First of all, from the Sheriff's Office, Stephen Haas, and also from the Sheriff's Office, David Heinz, thanks, Sheriff. From the Treasurer's Office, Denise Sterner, and from the Health Department, Eric Hyman. From the Engineers' Office, Dale Schilling. And for the Assessor's Office, Mike Dorbit, ForEx. So, sorry they couldn't be here, but thank you all for picking them up.
Yeah, and again, we want to encourage the department heads or elected officials, if they have employees, make sure, if they want to, that they can attend. But certainly on behalf of the Board, we'd like to thank all the employees. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on then, item five is claims and payments. Item A is a resolution.
Yes, the county expenditures this week total $233,758.80, 233-758.80. Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments on the claims? Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, item B is a resolution, Countryview.
The expenditures for Countryview total $33,640.11, 33640.11.
Any questions on that one?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Moving on to item six is to receive project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Happy New Year. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. The paved road systems are in good shape this morning. Nearly all of the roads are fine and free of ice, and we do expect that to, only to improve, considering the warming conditions tomorrow and then through the weekend. The moderators are out on the gravel road system this morning, roughing up the intersections with the paved road system. So can I answer any other questions at this time?
Any questions?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, minutes approved for the 26th, December 26th.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, item A is a consent agenda be made with a single resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any questions for the consent? Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Yes. White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item nine is contracts and agreement. This is a resolution of lowest reasonable bid from Ackley Painting Company. This is for concrete polishing services in the jail patrol room with a bid of $21.35 be approved.
Morning, Abby Keen is building maintenance. So this is for approximately a space of 340 square feet, located over at the jail in the patrol room area there. And we're using this area as a trial run to see how it goes, to see if we'd like to possibly move this forward for the rest of the jail.
Sheriff, didn't we try something else a few years ago for a trial area on the floors to see if we liked that?
We've not. This was talked about about two years ago. You actually put it into Rory's budget, or this FY, and it's taken us this long to work our way through the bids to get to where we're at today.
What's this make, you think's going to be better?
Polishing of the concrete. Right now, we have tile, and the tile is separating. It's 30 years old, 25 years old. And so what we're looking at doing is bringing up the tile. We chose a spot that was, the tile was really rough. It's a patrol room that the officers use every single day. They drag in the dirt and the muck and the sand and everything else with them. So we chose an area that needed to have something done with it. It's a very small area, but this is concrete polishing, and so they'll tear up the tile in this area and polish it to a high shine, and it's our hope that, very inexpensively, we can get to a maintenance-free position where we don't have to do the stripping, the waxing, the mopping, and all the other stuff that we routinely have to do to keep those tile floors looking nice. So this is a small area, but it's an area that's significant, and it needed to have something done with it anyway.
What's a good trial period, do you think, here, or...
Uh, no, I don't think so. You know, we did this out at the range to a lesser gloss than what I want to do in the jail building, and all we have to do is run a wet mop over it, and the shine comes back. So it's my hope that, once we see the end product, there's two or three companies that were pretty competitive for bids on this, and they all were kind of letting know that this is our trial test, but if you do a good job, there's a whole city block worth of building that we would be looking at trying to get it done. So this will probably be something that we'll implement in stages over the next several years to try and affect all of that, but we want to see how it looks. We want to see if we want to add tint to it, to maybe lighten it up from that dark concrete. We just kind of want to see what it's all going to look like when it's said and done. And there's various different grades or grits of polishing as well, and so we want to experiment a little with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions, comments? Did I get a motion on this, Grant?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 10, which is other business. This is B, a motion at the appointment of Kathryn Zeeman. This is the second term to the Blackhawk County Board of Health. Be approved, effective date is January 2, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Any questions on this one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Item C is a motion at the personnel requisition for executive director, regular, full-time, and the veterans department replacement, effective January 2nd, be approved.
So moved. Second.
Is there any questions or comments on this?
How far out are we going for applying for, looking for somebody? Just the general area, general, local newspapers, what newspapers?
Amanda's been putting together some costs, and she's going to submit that to the commission to see how much they want to spend, but for sure, the Courier, and possibly the Devine Register, depending on the price. But by our code, we do have to post it for at least 10 days, so. And when we also put it on our regular job site, by the way, they, multiple sources do scrape our websites, so it gets put on Indeed and Monster and all kinds of other areas. We're also looking into some places that would directly, or VA, people that are working in that field would directly look to seek those kind of jobs. I think the state VA office did it as well last time, too. Thank you. Yep.
Thanks, Deb.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. To keep the board, Deb, to keep the board involved in that, on what's going on, or what the process is. Item D is a motion, direct county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05, January 29th. This is for the proposed Pine Crest Room remodel project.
So moved. Second.
Any questions on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item M is discussion, scheduling, budget, work sessions. I think, from here on out, all our board meetings are going to have budget on there, whether she is ready for us or not, Susan. I guess the discussion, if we have to go another day of the week, which would you like to go?
Well, can I, Abby, can you bring up my screen?
She's not plugged in yet.
Tom, after we talked, I took a look at the calendar and noticed, in the past, we've historically done budget work sessions on Tuesday after the regular board meeting, and on Thursday. We've had them in the Thursday mornings, the last couple of years that I've been doing it. Tom mentioned that, you know, we used to have them on Thursday afternoons. I did notice, looking in January, that there are a couple of Thursdays that will not work. There's the new county officer training on the 16th and 17th, so Dan will be gone on that Thursday. And there's also a county social services meeting on the 10th, and I'm not sure, Craig, if you're planning to attend that, or if the alternate on the county social services board is planning to attend. So what my hope was, in that week, if we have a budget work session on the 8th and the 15th after the regular board meeting, that we could possibly have one on that Friday morning, the 11th or the 18th. And I probably will not be ready to start these until the 8th, and so if we start on the 8th, we really do need to have probably two sessions each week in order to get it done. I would like to shoot for finalizing everything by the 31st, but we do have an additional week that we could go into in February. The first week of February, we could continue to hold budget work sessions. Probably the 8th is the latest to get everything finalized. That will give me a week to put it all together in the right format, to get it to the paper. My goal is to have the budget hearing on March 5th. The budget is due to be certified on the 15th, and having it on March 5th, if something goes wrong with publishing, which we've had a couple of those situations, we still have one more week, or if there's any kind of concern over that, that gives us an extra week. So let me go back up to January.
Well, why don't we schedule this for the 8th, which is on the board meeting, and from there on out, and then at the end of that meeting, the Board will have a chance, Board members, of checking their schedules and decide what they want to do, whether that week or from there on out, rather than trying to set something today, that work, Board.
I was going to say, for clarification, are you talking about the possibility, the 11th or the 18th, not needing both?
Well, both, yeah. If we could have it, like, on the 8th, and the 11th, and the 15th, and the 18th, and then we can move to the 22nd, 24th, 29, 31st, if Thursdays are better than Fridays. But on those two weeks, if we could do it on the 8th, and the 11th, and then the 15th and the 18th, especially, I guess, on the week of the 14th, Dan will be at the training on the 16th and 17th, so Tuesday and Friday might be the only two days that kind of work there. Anyway, those are my, I can send this to you if you want to check your schedules.
That'd be all right. And then just, for sure, we'll have it on next Tuesday, put it on every Tuesday, and then we can decide from there. Is that right, Board?
Yes.
We probably won't have any departments on next Tuesday, but I'd like to give you kind of an overview and have some discussion on various estimates that we're going to put in the budget and so forth, so.
I think it's important, too, Susan, that you hear from all the Board members on what exactly they want to see, or how they want to do it, and so forth, so.
Right.
That's probably a good day for that.
Okay.
More discussion on that, Dave, I'm sure.
Anybody else? Anything else? When did we adopt it last year? What was our date?
We had the hearing on March 6th.
6th?
Yeah. So it was the same kind of timeframe.
I don't think we've ever had a problem getting even close to the dates.
No.
Okay, then, sounds good.
We had sessions if we needed.
We'll continue that next Tuesday.
Very good.
Because everybody goes different ways, and... Okay, moving on to item F, this is discussion, possible board action renaming from room 201, which this room here, the Frank Maxman Boardroom.
I put this on the agenda for the purpose of discussion. I think with 51 years of public service to this community, we owe Mr. Maxman a great debt of gratitude for the work he's done over the years. Like, Mr. Jamison did a fantastic job on highlighting some of the things he's done over the years for Blackhawk County, especially during the floods and stuff, so. I think Frank, you know, there's other rooms in the building named after people. Across the street, there's rooms named after various people. I think this is quite appropriate. I've talked to several department heads, they were in favor of it. There's a few I didn't talk to, but I think this is a good thing.
Well, I agree with you, Craig. Yeah, I said Frank was to be commended for his service, and I'd say it was a great article, and I think we all spoke last week, and while it was quite emotional, I think everyone was very appreciative of his service and what he's done, even in the city and other positions. I don't think we've had a lot of discussion as far as what's setting a precedent, or what we need to do for maybe naming a building, or, I mean, not a building, I'm sorry, a room, and what the process would be in determining that. So I'm not prepared to really vote on it today, but certainly would like to have more discussion about it.
I think 51 years of service speaks for itself, and precedence, I don't go along with any precedence in my lifetime. There's not such a word in my vocabulary.
Well, even not that, I just think there's other parts that maybe we need to discuss.
Like what?
Since it's involving a county building and a facility.
It's a room. They do it across, they've done it across the street. There's a room upstairs named after a lawyer. It's already been done, so the precedence has already been set, if you want to go there.
You're talking about the state, a room, a state room?
So, somebody give them the authority to do that.
I don't know. I know it's never come before the Board before, since I've been here.
Oh, it was way before you. It was before me, even, before Whitey.
Chris?
I guess, I mean, I talked to Craig with it, and I was, I'm okay with the idea, because I do appreciate his service, but I want to make sure, before we take a vote on it, that we've got consensus, everybody, because I don't want a resolution like this to fail, so I want to make sure we've got everybody on board, but...
And that's all, Craig. I was just asking that we have more discussion about it. I'd even really like to talk to Frank about it. Is that something?
I've already talked to Frank about it.
Well, I have not talked to Frank.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I don't...
Many of you have attended many more meetings with Frank than I have, but I've had the pleasure to serve on committees with him, and Frank was always the voice of reason. He has this calming effect. Frank is top notch, top notch. I support it, and I'm ready to vote today.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question that this discussion is saying anything about his service, you know, to the county, or what he did earlier in life.
What are we afraid of? What are we afraid of doing if we name a room after him?
Craig, I think it's important that everybody feels comfortable, because that's something that, it's a lifetime thing. Once we do it, maybe, maybe not, another Board could come and change it. I don't know if that's ever happened, so I don't really have any problem if we kind of wait and talk about this. I'd rather have full support than three consensus, like Chris said.
Yeah, I definitely, yeah, would love to see it be unanimous, so. Is there any problem, though, with delaying it? I mean, it doesn't have to be done today.
I think there is. That's why I brought it to, get it done, get it over with.
Well, I mean, we don't need to get it over with, though, I mean, so to speak, just to...
You're going, we kicked the can down the street enough on a lot of stuff. We've got a parking lot over there we're waiting on. We kicked the can on different things. We're going to wait until somebody gets killed on the street, out here, because we don't move. We've got to be more proactive, not reactive.
Well, this is exactly the type of conversation I didn't want to have in a public meeting, in an open meeting, so it's unfortunate.
Well, sometimes that's where it's got to be brought out. Frank spent, I'd be willing to bet, over the past 12 years, at eight hours a day, at least eight hours a day of service, and sometimes during them floods, I know for fact he was up over 24 hours. He's a prime example of leadership, and like Mr. Tralka said, and of what community service really is. Some of us take too much for granted. If some of us did half the stuff that Mr. Maxman's done, this would be a completely different Board. I'll go that far, too. I have the utmost respect for Mr. Maxman. I started out by calling him brother years ago, and he was quite upset with it. Now he's quite comfortable with it. And as Mr. Tralka and Mr. Little know, you have a comradeship in the military of having your brother's back, and I'll have his back till forever, for the things he's done for this community, and that's just a small token of appreciation for the things that he's done for this community, the hours he's put in, the hard work he's done for this community, and like Mr. Tralka said, he's got a calming effect. I wish he was here now.
Be silent.
Well, you got, you have the three votes to do it today, so you want to, I mean, do you want to make a motion? I mean, I wish we had total consensus, but it's up to you whether you want to wait to get that, or you want to make the motion today.
We'll probably wait forever for that, Chris.
You don't have to wait forever, Craig, just to have more discussion on it.
I guess I wasn't aware that the department heads were asked.
I walked around and talked to some of them. At a few different times, I was even to the point of naming a couple of bridges after him. Not all, all the bridges, but a bridge, excuse me. I just think it's appropriate. The man has done a lot for this community.
I don't, yeah, I agree. I mean, I don't think that should be the discussion, Craig, because I think everybody up here, including sitting out there, understands Frank, of what he's done over the years. I mean, obviously, I didn't really know him when he was before the Board, but...
Neither did I.
We become good friends after that, but I don't think that's the discussion. I think discussion should be mainly, do we want to start naming rooms in the public building after individuals? I don't know if the county's ever done it, and I don't even know if we have a policy that prohibits it. Deb shaking her head, no, I don't know, like I said. I know we've turned the state down a couple of times in the last year and a half, that wanted to do something upstairs and something outside, I believe.
I don't recall that.
Well, something to do with a garden out there named after somebody, and then just recently, a few months ago, naming some hallway up there, a plaque from an employee.
A perfect example of this is outside, they had bricks, there's a brick walkway out there that's got bricks that were supposed to be, you know, in honor of people that have done good things for the county. I think there's either just two or three bricks, because there's another thing that got started, and it just went by the wayside. Every time I walk out there...